Village Westmont, Board Meeting for November 1st, 2010. I'd like to begin by having our clerk please take the roll call.
Mayor Ron.
Here.
The clerks here. Trustee Emery.
Here.
Trustee Fleming.
Here.
Trustee Forsley.
Here.
Trustee Klebina.
President.
Trustee Scott.
Here.
Trustee Seneca.
Here.
Manager Searle.
Here.
Attorney Zemanek.
Here.
Police Chief Mulhern.
Here.
Economic Development Director and Assistant Manager Kimball.
Here.
Fire Chief Trout.
Here.
Deputy Police Chief Gunther.
Here.
Police Sergeant Slicker.
Here.
Police Sergeant Dale.
Here.
Police Sergeant Brenza.
Sir.
Police Sergeant Thompson.
Here.
Administrative Assistant Rice.
Here.
And Police Officer Padilla.
Here.
And we also have several members of the Westmont Citizens Police Academy here.
Is there anyone that hasn't been introduced yet?[61.01][61.01](Laughter). Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on the agenda are the minutes of the committee, the whole meeting held October 14th, and board meeting held October 18th, 2010.
Motion to approve, Seneca.
Second, Fleming.
Discussion. Roll call.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Klebina.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Reports. I have asked numerous businesses in the community to come in and talk about their business for, you know, five minutes or so. And we've done this in the past, we've had some recently, and this evening we have Pat Womack, who is the General Manager of Laurel BMW. And we've asked him, and he was invited specifically by Larry Forsberg from our Chamber of Commerce to come in and talk a little bit about the car business and in particular Laurel BMW. Mr. Womack, would you like to step out then?
Thanks for having me. I don't want to make this into a sales pitch or anything, but I appreciate the effort. It makes me a little nervous to have all the (inaudible) behind me. I don't know why they're all here on this evening, but that's okay, we won't talk about them.
I explained that to you earlier, did you forget already?
You pulled me by the hook and then I saw the stun guns, it really (inaudible). I just briefly, you know, we're involved in the Westmont Auto Mile that we've started here, and it's something that's been important to us. The city has been very good with, you know, our construction and things that we've done locally. We've really tried to improve the facilities over the years, as you know. I'm not going to really go into the, you know, the history of the store. The history is the history, it's what we're doing from here on forward, I think that is important. You know, Laurel's been around for a long time. The brand is obviously a very strong brand. One of the things that we're really proud of is that we have a lot of locals that work for us. I think that we've done a very good job in the community in the recent years. It's important, I think, that the people who are out listening and watching know that some of our tax dollars that we collect come back to the city to help. One person you have to give a lot of credit to is Larry, he's been working tirelessly, I think, to help the city. There's a lot of things going on that maybe people don't know about of what he does to try to help the community. And I know that there's a lot of things that we're trying as a group to put together for next year. I'm sure that somebody else will be talking about that at a future date. But, you know, I'm passionate about the business that I'm in, I'm passionate about the brand that I work for, I'm passionate about the area that I work in, and feel very fortunate to be in this area. My wife and I moved from the city to be closer to work, we live in Burr Ridge, and I think that that's important. A lot of the charity things that we do are in the local community, and I think that that's also important.
Okay.
You know, I would invite people that if they're in the market to give us an opportunity to come and see us and visit with us if we can and see what we could do to try to help. Obviously, some of that money's going to stay here, so, you know, I don't know if anybody has any questions on anything about what we're doing. I know the Baker Square thing we probably want to talk about briefly. We've purchased the old Baker Square, I'm sorry your pie place is gone now. We are spending quite a bit of money to redo that facility, and it's going to be our certified used car building. As you drive up and down Ogden Avenue, I'm sure you've seen the changes in the glass structure that we've put in. That should be done in the next month, month and a half, and hopefully will be moved in before year end. I think that that will change the look of that corner significantly. The future of what we're going to do, you know, I don't know if I can really touch on that because I don't know if we really know what the future is anymore with the way that everything is. I thought about something funny I might be able to say when I got up here. You know, it's probably the only time people are happy to see the car dealer on TV instead of all the negativity that you see, you know, going into tomorrow in the election, and it's a very interesting time. But we're stable, you know, you won't see us closing our doors. You know, we try to do what we can to keep the business in the community, and if there's anything anybody has to ask or comment, I'm happy to answer, but I appreciate the opportunity to come up and speak in front of the board. And, you know, I'm happy to answer any questions if there is any, I don't know if there would be, but...
Any questions from board members?
No. I did hear on the news that there is actually a shortage of used cars because people are hanging on to their cars, or, so I hear that, you know, that's a new look that I've never thought of.
As you remember, probably last year there was a lot of cheaper cars that got crushed thanks to our government. The cash-for-clunkers thing was a big thing, I think that's my buzzer telling me I'm done.
Those are what the tasers are for.
Ah, I got you. Yes, there is a shortage of nice pre-driven cars. The market, people are holding on to cars longer, that's correct. The new car market over the last few years has shrunk significantly, especially the domestics. Now they're picking up because they've been able to restructure, and their products are very good now, so that you're seeing some good new car domestic business growing forward. But over the years, you've seen a decline in new car sales, thus making the used car market more difficult. So to find a good, nice used car is more difficult and commands more money, so what you're saying is correct.
Well, they ended the news saying it's a good time to buy a new car, so...
Always a good time to buy.
Looking forward to it.[490.12][490.12](Laughter).
Anyway, thank you for your time. If there's anything else, or...
For whatever this is worth, my oldest daughter Heidi's boyfriend drives a BMW, and he had it serviced about three weeks ago at your dealership. And he was absolutely pleased, very pleased with the courtesy and the service and everything about your dealership, so he will be bringing it back there from now on for all these services.
That's good. We try, you know, I didn't want to beat our chest very much, but we are one of the only stores in the Chicagoland area that's won what's called the Center of Excellence Award with BMW.
Okay.
And no other dealer in the Chicagoland area's won that award in the last 10 years.
Wow.
And it's a very prestigious award with BMW, and it's not just about selling cars, so you can't fake your way into that one, it's all about how you take care of customers. And obviously, that's very important to me. It's a difficult time, and sometimes it's difficult to make everybody happy, but we try, and, you know, I'm not going to win every battle unfortunately, but at least we're putting our best foot forward, so I appreciate the comments.
I think you've gone out of your way yourself to get involved in activities in the community with the various organizations, and it's very visible to many of us. So we appreciate everything that you do, and if there's anything we can do to help you sell more BMWs, just let us know, we'd be happy to do that.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you.
I have something else to bring up with Deputy Chief Gunther, but that'll be after the Police Department presentation. So for now, that's all that I have. Moving right along, our village clerk.
I just want to remind everybody to start with, to vote tomorrow. The polls open at 6:00 and close, 6:00 AM and close at 7:00 PM, so get out and vote. And then remind the residents that during the month of November, on your garbage day, you get two free bags of leaves, so take advantage of that. It's the whole month of November on your garbage day. There is an Economic Development Committee meeting on Wednesday, November 3rd, at 9:00 AM here in Village Hall. On Sunday, November 7th, don't forget to turn back your clock. I have a lot of things to announce tonight, so that daylight savings ends unfortunately on November 7th. On November 11th, at 11:00 AM, there will be a Veterans Day service in Ty Warner Park. There's a Public Works Committee meeting on November 9th at 7 o'clock PM in the Water Department. And I've also been asked to remind residents that all the Holly Day events will be, Larry McIntyre wanted us to announce, is to start planning for all the Holly Day events because they start taking place this month. So look at your calendar and see what all's going on there. And I do believe I forgot to announce our Budget Analyst, Parker, but he's here too. So I want to make sure people know Spencer's here. I'm done now.
Thank you. Next, our village attorney, John Zemanek.
Jenny, since you're announcing meetings, there's a special planning and zoning meeting this Wednesday at 7 o'clock.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Next, our village manager, Ron Searle, who will introduce our program for this evening.
Yes, before I do that, I would like to request an executive session regarding pending litigation and personnel. And as the mayor mentioned, tonight we have our continuing series of department presentations. The Police Department's going to make their presentation tonight. It's a little unique compared to some of our other presentations, so with that, I'll introduce Chief Mulhern, and he'll take it away.
Thank you, Mayor Searle. Mayor Ron, Village Board Trustees, good evening. On behalf of the men and women of the Westmont Police Department, I'm pleased to introduce the Westmont Police Department's presentation for the Village of Westmont Community Academy. Tonight, we will be presenting a different type of PowerPoint, and I ask that you turn your attention to the video monitors in the room, and then within a minute... Maybe not. With that, I'd probably present to you the Westmont Police Department's Community Academy presentation.
The Westmont Police Department is comprised of several divisions which work together in order to provide the highest quality police service to the community. Through the coordinated efforts of the Police Administration, Patrol Division, Investigations Division, and Support Services, the Westmont Police Department is able to meet the needs of the community. Our police facility was built in 1996, and it has several key features that allow us to meet the ever-changing demands of police service. The first floor of our building contains the Dispatch Center, Records Division, Booking Room, and our Evidence Storage Facility. There are also several rooms available to our officers for interviews and report writing. The second floor is home to the Police Administrative Staff, the Investigations Division, and our Training Center. Officers regularly frequent the basement of the Police Department, as it is home to our ho-haw room, firing range, and the fitness center. The Department regularly hosts classes from a variety of nationally recognized vendors in order to provide high-quality training to our officers and officers in surrounding communities. Classes such as Northwestern University's Supervision of Police Personnel attract students from across the state. As the host agency, we are able to provide this training to our officers at little or no cost and return modest profit to the village. Annually, profit margins are between $9,500 and $16,000. The Police Department Administrative Staff are responsible for a wide variety of tasks that are important to the village and its residents. The Chief of Police is responsible for guiding the administrative staff in all aspects of modern policing according to his vision. The Administrative Assistant is responsible for all departmental building, payroll, maintenance of personnel files, and overseeing the crossing area program. She is also instrumental in developing the department's annual budget. The Deputy Chief of Operations oversees the Patrol Division, which is comprised of four sergeants, 24 patrol officers, and one community service officer. In addition to leading the Patrol Division, Deputy Chief of Operations is also responsible for addressing citizen concerns, community projects such as neighborhood watch programs, and conducting internal investigations. The Deputy Chief of Administration oversees the Operations Officer, Administrative Officer, the Investigations Division, and Support Services. In addition to supervisory responsibilities, the Deputy Chief of Administration also addresses community concerns, performs statistical analysis of department functions, completes special projects assigned by the Chief, and conducts internal investigations. The Operations Officer is responsible for coordinating the Red Speed Photo Enforcement Program, distribution of department radar trailers, and organizing the department's response for special events such as the Fourth of July and the Taste of Westmont. The Operations Officer also manages the department's vehicle fleet and extra duty assignments. The Administrative Officer is responsible for several important tasks which ensure the department is able to deliver the highest quality police service to the community. The Administrative Officer must develop and maintain a schedule for up to 40 officers and ensure shift coverage 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. Providing officers with up-to-date training in current law terms, new or advanced techniques such as evidence collection, and tactically sound firearms training are also part of the Administrative Officer's responsibility. The Patrol Division is the heart of the Police Department, and these officers work as a team to address the needs of the community. Officers assigned to patrol are available to the public all day, every day. Within the Patrol Division, officers are trained in a variety of specialty assignments in order to make them more effective at collecting evidence, solving crimes, and addressing community concerns. Specialty assignments allow officers the opportunity to advance their careers and become integral members of the training team. Each specialty is distinct in nature, and the combination of several specialty assignments gives officers a global perspective on law enforcement. Specialty assignments also prepare officers for positions of responsibility. Patrol officers often respond to calls with no idea what they're going to find when they arrive. Accidents such as this one are often caused by a series of events that have crime scenes miles away from the accident. Complex investigations such as these are manpower-intensive and require officers to look for signs that there might be more than meets the eye. Patrol officers are involved in numerous community policing functions which are designed to promote relationships between the department and members of the community. Some of these activities include security at special events such as the Taste of Westmont, community reading events for children, vacation watches, and daily school patrols while school is in session. The Patrol Division is also available at all times for the Safe Aiming Program for Infants. The Westmont Police Department offers annual Citizens Police Academies to both juvenile and adult residents. Each year, officers with specific areas of expertise volunteer their time to instruct classes in these academies. Police academies are extremely well-received by those that attend, and they allow officers to build relationships with residents. In addition to community relations, the Citizens Police Academy gives residents a greater understanding of police procedure and how they can work with the Police Department to solve community problems. The Westmont Police Department Investigations Division is responsible for follow-up investigations of all types of crimes ranging from simple theft to homicide. In addition to follow-up investigations, the Division also conducts proactive drug and gang interdiction investigations, pre-employment investigations for village employees, and tobacco and alcohol compliance checks. The Division also conducts sex offender registrations. General Assignment Detectives conduct all of investigations within the Village of Westmont. They are responsible for a wide variety of cases ranging from simple theft and battery investigations to the most complex homicide or financial crimes cases. Here, investigators search for evidence after securing the crime scene. The juvenile detective is responsible for all cases involving juvenile offenders. Part of the juvenile detective's responsibilities is to make presentations to children within our community. The juvenile detective is also assigned as liaison to the schools within the community, and is responsible for several youth programs such as pure jerky, red river meat, and snowball, snowflake retreats. Our problem-oriented policing detective is responsible for solving community problems such as uninhabitable buildings, gang problems, and illegal drug cases. Communication-centered personnel are the public's point of first contact with the Police Department. They determine if service calls require a normal or emergency response, and dispatch officers accordingly. In addition to call assignment, dispatch personnel are responsible for emergency medical dispatch, maintaining arrest warrant files, monitoring alarm boards, providing officers with vital information on traffic stops, and running criminal history checks on offenders. The Records Division staff includes two full-time records clerks who are responsible for processing and storing arrest case files, assigning officers court dates, and maintaining department reports. The Records Division is our liaison to the DuPage County State Attorney's Office, and they also process all Freedom of Information Act requests. The Westmont Police Department actively participates in the Village of Westmont Cruise Nights by providing safety equipment and personnel on a regular basis. Our major event, Squad Car Night, attracts numerous police agencies and is well attended by village residents and visitors alike. This year was our biggest event, with over 50 squad cars from nearly as many agencies in attendance, including several officers representing out-of-state agencies as far away as West Virginia. This event gives residents the opportunity to interact with police officers in a social setting and is enjoyed by kids of all ages. The Police Department also participates in other community events such as the torch run and cap on top for Special Olympics, and the St. Jude's Race to the Flight and a Fit The Westmont Police Department is involved with several organizations which through collaborative effort help us better accomplish our mission of providing a safe and secure environment for our residents. Some of these organizations include Fiat SWAT and Fiat Major Crimes Unit, the FBI, the DuPage County Arson Task Force, and DuPage Metropolitan Enforcement Group under Conex Task Force.
At this time, I'd like to introduce the members of my staff who are here with me this evening. Deputy Chief James Gunther, Sergeant Ross Brenza, Sergeant Jim Slicker, Sergeant Michael Dale, Administrative Assistant Deborah Rice, Officer Padilla, and Sergeant Thompson. We will be able to answer any questions that the board may have at the end of our presentation, and at this time, I'd like to especially thank Sergeant Michael Dale, who created the presentation we just saw. I appreciate his time, effort, and expertise in making it the professional presentation that it was. Our department will continue to provide professional and dedicated services to all our residents, business owners, and visitors to our community. We will continue to meet the daily needs of our community and offer services to maintain the quality of life that our residents expect and deserve. We're looking towards renewing our community watch program to bring neighbors together to assist us in helping keep our neighborhoods safe and secure. We will also be offering again our Junior and Adult Citizens Police Academies, and we invite our residents to attend so that they can meet with and learn more about their police officers and the men and women at the Westmont Police Department. I personally intend to hold regular meetings throughout the community to personally meet with the residents and business owners, learn more about what their concerns are, and determine if there's anything that the Police Department can do to assist them, or any additional services that we might be able to provide for them. Our department is continued to be committed to meeting the diverse needs of our community, whether those needs be a local businessperson or their employees, the young adults moving into their first apartment or home, parents just starting a family, children going to school, or one of our most valued assets, our senior citizens. Each has different needs, and we must be prepared to meet those needs in a professional manner. My staff and I will continue to meet not only the needs of the community, but also the needs of our employees, village staff, and elected officials. We will continue to seek and obtain the best equipment and training available for our officers while still being aware of our budget concerns. Because of our nation's economic crisis, we are all being, having asked to do more with less. The Westmont Police Department is no exception to that. We, along with the entire village staff, will continue to make the best use of our tax dollars that we receive from our residents and businesses. I'd also ask that you take time to remember the 36 sworn and the 14 civilian men and women of the Westmont Police Department who stand ready to assist us while we are at home, at work, school, at play, and even while we are asleep in our beds. When most people retreat from danger, they go towards it, and I am proud of each member of the department for their professionalism, diligence, and dedication. I'm proud to be their Chief of Police. The Westmont Police Department is just one of several village departments who provide services to our residents, businesses, and visitors. Together, we make Westmont a premier community within which to work, live, and raise a family. I'd also like to draw special attention to the volunteers that you see here in the room with me as well. The members of the Citizens Police Academy are volunteers that would help us at any moment notice, and be able to allow us to do half of the, some of the programs that we wouldn't be able to do otherwise. It's their volunteerism that helps make this, again, a great community. I thank you for your time, and now my staff and I are available to answer any questions that you may have. Or none at all.
Wow, you've covered everything. Great presentation.
Thank you.
We're very fortunate to have the department that we have, and I know you do so much, as you said, with less and less, and head count is down. Services definitely are always out there, and things need to be done, and you get it done, and we appreciate it.
We've been fortunate enough in that we haven't been, we're down from our strength of approximately one year ago, and yet we've been able to do this without having to reduce any services to the village. We're very proud of that fact. Again, we can, as all the village departments, have to do more with less. It's a challenge, but it's also too, we have to use our tax dollars wisely, and I think that's something that we collectively do successfully.
I think it's also fortunate that we have Tom as our chief. He's the right man for the job, and the whole community should be proud of you. Jingle.[1655.13][1655.13](Applause).
Well said.
Keep up the good work.
If I can get my podium back up.[1663.01][1663.01](Laughter). Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you, very nice.
It's very apparent, Tom, that all of departments have had to make personnel cutbacks, and all of our department's staff have been doing more and more. And it's unfortunate, but that's the way that it has to be, so when you say that you're doing more with less, we realize how much more work everyone in the department is doing, and we appreciate that. And hopefully, when the economy starts to turn around, we can look at adding more staff once again to be able to do all the work that everyone has picked up the slack on now, so that we can continue to move ahead into the future. So thank you, and thank all of your department for all that they do for all of us 365 days a year.
Thank you, ma'am. Again, I stand here as a representative of the department, but it's the officers who are out there 24 hours a day, seven days a week. At 3:00 in the morning, we're home sleeping, they're out there patrolling, keeping our businesses and our residents safe. And again, I'm very proud to be their representative and be here, but it's the officers who are out there daily keeping us safe that deserve all the credit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. As I mentioned, they asked Deputy Chief Jim Gunther to give a presentation on our red light program. They've got to make some quick changes in our equipment, but many of us continue to get questions on our red light enforcement program and the light that we have at Cass Avenue and Naperville Road.
Boy.
And I thought the information that he put together is very worthwhile for all of us to see, as well as anyone who may be watching this on television. The numbers will surprise you, and I think it will become apparent that we're not trying to make a lot of money with the red light program. that we're not trying to make a lot of money with the red light program. We're trying to do it as a safety measure in our community. So when you're ready for your presentation, we look forward to getting the statistics.
Well, I'm ready. At the last committee of the whole meeting, the mayor tasked me with coming up with some, some concrete figures about the red light photo enforcement program, looking at the total number of violations that are captured by the, by the cameras at the intersection of Cass and Naperville Road, keeping in mind that we have two cameras. So, I, being a diligent deputy chief, went back and tasked Sergeant Brenza with looking up some information for me, and this is what we're providing to you tonight. We looked at a three-month snapshot, you know, going back July, August, September of two thousand and ten because the entire year was pretty consistent with these numbers. So, turning your attention to the monitor, in September two thousand and ten, for example, we had fifty-five hundred total violations that were captured by the Red Speed cameras, combination of both cameras together. Of those fifty-five hundred, Red Speed employees sorted out three hundred and thirty-nine potential violations. Of those three hundred and thirty-nine, Westmont Police Officers cited sixty-five or approved sixty-five citations to be issued to, out of those three hundred and thirty-nine violations. So, looking at the numbers one of two ways, you can say that of the three hundred and thirty-nine violations sent to us by Red Speed, we issued citations at about a nineteen percent rate. If you take the entire total of fifty-five hundred and then take into consideration that we issued sixty-five citations, it's about one-tenth of one percent. And those numbers are consistent going over the three months. So if you look at the same for August, we issued about two-tenths of one percent between the total numbers captured and the total numbers of citations actually issued. Same for July where we're looking at sixty-five hundred, sixty-five fifty-six captured, ninety-six citations were issued, about fifteen-tenths of one percent. I, I believe that, that we're using this system appropriately. I believe that we're using this system as it was intended for safety, and I'll entertain any questions at this time.
Questions from any of the board members?
The numbers seem to be pretty consistent. The chief has given us the report and, and they seem to be right around that twenty percent, maybe twenty-five percent sometimes, but right in that range of the ones that Red Speed sends us.
Correct.
Yeah, you know, so we're doing, I think we're doing it right.
Anything else?
I'm good.
Thank you.
Thanks.
For putting this all together. And that's all that I have. Moving right along. New business. First item variance request, three thirty-seven South Lincoln. Board to consider ordinance approving a zoning code variance request from Kenneth and Linda Ochen to reduce the supplemental side yard setback from thirty feet to twelve feet for an addition. We have a motion.
Motion to approve, Emory.
Second, Scott.
Hearing no discussion. Roll call.
Trustee Emory.
Yes.
Trustee Klebenow.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Next item variance and fee waiver requests, four hundred and four oh two South Warwick. Board to consider ordinances approving the following requests from Linda Schurbis and Julie N. Bioro Tomasi. A zoning code variance request to permit a thirty-six inch masonry fence where code permits thirty inches in the side yard adjoining the street, and B, request to waive zoning application filing fee. Take these as two separate votes. You have a motion on point A.
Motion to approve paragraph A, Emory.
Second, Seneca.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on point A? Hearing non-roll call, please.
Trustee Emory.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Klebenow.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Point B.
Motion to approve, Emory.
Second, Scott.
Discussion?
I understand from Thursday night that discussion went along the lines of a reduction to two hundred and fifty dollars rather than a complete waiver. That's how the ordinance is drafted. If you have something different, let me know.
Now, is that two hundred and fifty together for the two?
Yeah, it's the wave of the five hundred, which it would be for two, and to make it two hundred and fifty, treat it as one project.
I think our village planner Shannon Malik had indicated that the actual fee for application for a waiver, excuse me, for a variance in this request in the R four zoning district is five hundred dollars. The fee for a similar type of variance in the R three district, if this were R three, is two hundred and fifty dollars. I believe the petitioners incorrectly thought that they were being charged double the two hundred and fifty dollar fee when in fact they're being charged one five hundred dollar application fee, which is the case for R four general residence districts in the village.
So what you're saying is they're already being considered as one?
Yes.
They're not being charged five hundred?
Yes. But I mean, staff certainly understands economic hardships. If the board is so inclined to reduce that fee from five hundred to two fifty to give the petitioners the same net effect that they were hoping for, that is certainly your prerogative.
Yeah, 'cause for the R four multifamily, this is only the two of them, so.
Yeah, and it's not like Carlton Court.
I'm still in favor of it being for two fifty.
But we apologize for the ambiguity and the uncertainty at the last discussion.
Let me double check then. Are there gonna be maybe two inspections done and they're gonna be in-house inspections? So we're not gonna be paying this?
Yes. Planning engineer Kim Nichol will conduct those inspections.
Okay, so there'll be one inspection for the footing and then another one when the wall is complete, but it's all staying in-house. We're not going to.
That's correct.
Then, then two fifty is, is okay with me if it's a, only two minor little walls.
Everybody comfortable with that? Recommendation?
Do we have to modify how this is or just?
The ordinance specified that it's a waiver slash reduction to two hundred and fifty dollars. I think it's okay.
Okay, well, sir, is there any further questions? Roll call on point B.
Trustee Emory.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Klebenow.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Okay. Next item, special use and development permit request, twenty-two South Cass. Board to consider ordinances approving the following request from Keisha Knight. A, special use permit request operate a salon with an ancillary training classroom in the B one limited business district, and B, development permit request in the B one limited business district.
Motion to approve point A, Emory.
Second, Scott.
Discussion?
Yes, I do. You must have known, you looked right at me. I did have some questions and with the board's permission, I'd like her to come to the podium because we really never talked much about the classroom, the training portion, students, how many teachers, if there's certification, and I'd like to make sure that gets clarified before we approve. So, if you would come to the podium.
With board's permission, could we ask you to answer those questions, please?
Specifically now, are you certified already to teach this?
So, can I answer the questions in a bundle? So Shannon sent the questions to me.
Oh, okay, I didn't know Shannon even had them.
In an email to let me know that I needed to be here to respond.
Go ahead if you.
So I think there's a bit of misunderstanding about the ancillary classroom. It's actually a training facility and it's what nail techs use. The manufacturers actually send in their representatives to come in and train us nail techs on their products. It's not a school, and that was one of the things that.
Not any different than a hair salon. They do that hair salons as well.
So it's not a school, and it's one of the things that Shannon and I had been going back and forth about because when she saw the training center or the education center, she thought school, and I didn't quite know how to explain to her that it's.
Explained it on Thursday.
It's really just.
I, I didn't catch it if she did, so that's why I want to make sure. And the person that called it in to me did not, was still waiting to hear more about the school. That's why I want to make sure we really lock this in. So this is more for a company to come in and show products to you?
Yes, so they, they come and they teach us how to actually use their products, how to properly apply their products. They teach us techniques on how to improve our process or our own application of the product. So it's more for the betterment of licensed nail techs. So this isn't for new, for people who are students. Well, students are actually allowed to take the course, but they don't get credit in their coursework for being in the classrooms. This is more for licensed nail techs, and it's for skill enhancement as opposed to the education such as a beauty school would provide.
Like product demonstration.
Yes.
Do you need continuing education like hairdressers need?
Um, yes, I do.
And this helps go to your continuing or not?
Sometimes they do. So it's, it's the choice of whomever's offering the courses. So at some point I will be offering them as continuing education and to answer the question, am I, will it be, is there a license involved? Yes, so I would have to petition the state or at least acknowledge to the state, these are the courses that are intended to be taught, and they would actually provide a license.
Okay, so you would possibly have other people in the nail business come in and sit with you on these courses?
I wouldn't necessarily be teaching the courses.
No, but I mean, I'm saying that while they're doing the demo, you'd have other people come in so they get the training at the same time, whether they're your salon or your competition?
Yes.
Okay, any idea how many? That's the question that came up.
Right now the space is only, it would only hold six, and that's the, the minimum that a manufacturer requires.
Okay, so the minimum they want is six people and that's probably the max you can probably fit in there, so.
Yes.
An estimated six people then. Okay, and the licensing is already taken care of you?
I can't take care of the licensing until you guys say yes.
Oh, no, I mean, the, the certification or whatever you need to be doing this, you know, you understand you'll be doing it.
I can't take care of any of the licensing until you all say yes because the state board wants to know where.
Right, no, I'm just saying you are where and you're planning getting this.
Yes, absolutely.
That's, that's the other question.
So I've already got the paperwork, as a matter of fact, it's in my folder, and as soon as you guys say yes, I'm gonna put in an envelope and mail it.
Okay, and so far as we know, you're the only employee.
Yes.
Where are you gonna park? 'Cause I drove around there. Are you parking on the street or are they allowing you to park behind there?
I can actually walk. I live two and a half, three blocks away.
Oh, okay.
And there's another car at the house where they can drop me off. So I don't actually intend to drive to work. I intend to either be dropped off or walk.
But in, in your landlord, does he have space available? Should you happen to be lucky enough to expand to maybe a second technician or something or?
What I understand from discussions with Shannon is that there is a, the apartment building that it's attached to because he owns both the storefronts and the apartment building, they have parking that is dedicated to them. I believe she mentioned at the Economic Development Committee meeting that they are actually short parking. So technically, no, he does not, but we are actually still allowed to park in the back. We tend to not use those spaces.
'Cause your customers you'd want in the front, so I just wanted to make sure your vehicles.
Yes, I prefer for them to be up front, but they all understand. The two nail, the two salons that are around there, their customers seem to do fine, and I haven't seen any of them complaining, so I'm not so much worried about the parking. I know there's plenty of parking on the Quincy area, just in, in village space in general, and I do have intentions of, I know I will have to get a variance for things moving forward, but right now, my understanding is that one is not necessary.
Okay, and we did have four possibilities. What are we voting on right now? 'Cause you said you were reaching, the ordinance has been, has it been changed at all? Are we voting on one person, her, in the salon? Are we voting? I mean, how is this voting?
Right, you're voting to approve a special use, and then there are some special conditions that are attached to the special use. One that you've done with most businesses in the downtown have to do with if the business ceases for a period of ninety consecutive days, or if you sell the business or transfer the business ownership, we want the new owner or, you know, new business owner to come in and get a new special use permit. This allows the village a chance to evaluate market conditions and determine whether retail use would be better in this location or whether the service-oriented use is still appropriate pursuant to a special use permit. The other issue has to do with the fact that you, in phase one, are one employee with one basically customer station. Should you wish to expand, that will likely, we'll have to evaluate the parking anew, and you may need a variance or be able to locate parking, so you have to come back before this board if you want to expand. And I know that was part of your plan, and Shannon made you aware of that. So that condition's in the ordinance also.
Okay, so anything outside of the one station she would have to come back to us on then? Okay.
For parking variance, correct? Just for the parking variance.
Yeah, just for the parking, just for the parking variance, so, okay. Which probably wouldn't be bad if she ends up walking anyway because she's not using her one spot for herself, so. So I suppose if she did have a second station, that would be the one that would probably still put her in. She might be able to go through two stations without a parking as long as she's walking, but I'll leave it up to them. That, that clarifies a lot, especially that training, and I really appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Thank you. We have a motion and a second on point A. No further questions? Roll call on point A.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Emory.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Klebenow.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Point B.
Motion to approve, Emory.
Second, Seneca.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Emory.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Klebenow.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Go mail it.
Thank you. Next item, text amendment. Board to consider an ordinance approving an amendment to Appendix A, Section six point oh four D of the Westmont zoning code to reduce the maximum allowable lot coverage from forty percent to thirty-five percent in all single-family zoning districts.
Motion to approve, Emory.
Second, Scott.
Discussion?
I just wanted to bring up again what Mr. Hensrick brought up, 'cause I, I measured mine. I would have never thought I was at thirty-five percent, and I am, the driveway, the patio, I see pad over there, yeah, the sidewalk that goes to the alley totaled, and then the house totaled thirty-five percent. And I thought, I, I would never thought, 'cause my house is not a, some of you know where I live, it's not a big home. So, I'm, you know, I'm kinda hemming and hawing, and I was, I was on board a hundred percent with the thirty-five percent, and I'm kinda, you know, wondering if that's the way we want to go. It's just a discussion, I don't.
I figured mine was thirty-five, ninety-four point seven, which means if we go to thirty-five, I am now non-conforming. So, I would have to probably take away some of the, you know, paver, well, we don't have paper brick, we just have stones, but we'd have to take some of that away to make me conforming or remove stuff to do anything to add on to the house. It, it, it's amazing when you do it, when you have to take in the stoop, the patio, the driveway, we had to estimate, 'cause it's such a weird, wide, strange driveway for us, so we just kind of estimated, but being a detached especially, that really, that took over a thousand away from me right there, and then for the driveway, and you're stuck. What can you do? You gotta have a driveway. Are we gonna bring it into a, one path up? So it, it is, it's something to think about. I can see where we're trying to hold people to the forty. Ever since we changed it, we've had a lot fewer people come in and ask, but if, I don't know how long, have we been thirty-five back in the seventies when the homes were built? Or they just didn't have any?
Did not have one.
They never had anything back then? The houses just had?
But the forty's only been for the last five or six years.
Well, that's the forty. How long thirty-five?
We have plenty of wiggle room with thirty-five if people want to say, well, I want to go to thirty-eight, thirty-nine. But if we're at forty and people come in and say, I want to go forty-three, forty-four, what we've been seeing is this, I believe when trustee Scott brought this up, was to avoid these constant overages.
I know.
That this was to bring it back in, so, and I don't think it's one of those things where people feel, will feel a great squeeze in their plans. It's only been in effect for, you know, when there were, when tear downs and zero lot line was the big deal. My impression is we wanted to get away from that for many reasons, which were iterated and reiterated on Thursday.
But I don't want to change mine to a non-conforming.
Who's gonna make you tear anything out?
If I do anything, if I do any improvement, I would have to take out some of the patio or other things we have.
But we all, we all talked about if it's at thirty-five, that it gives us wiggle room to go as high as four.
Yeah, and pay two hundred and fifty dollars to come in and hope the new board sitting here, if there's a new board, would give permission. We know what we want. We can't say what a new board is going to want, and every two years, half the board could change.
And they could go to sixty percent.
Well-
We don't know.
Could, but-
We have to do what we think is right now.
If our, if our home is already at thirty-five or slightly over, we are now pushing everybody like at home into non-conforming.
Well, we became forty percent five years ago. How long were we thirty-five percent?
Oh, I don't know.
A long time, I, I don't know.
I don't know if it's been in the seventies.
I think it was that, for, thirty-five percent for, for quite a few years.
Or decades, maybe?
Probably decades, I'll bet.
So you were not conforming?
Yeah.
For a long time anyhow.
Well, I was until we put in the garage. We bought the house, we were conforming. We put in the garage, the driveway, the patio, things like that. So I'm just saying that-
You know, I mean, really, this is more, what we're trying to address is teardowns and new constructions, I mean, that's really the bulk of, of what we're talking about in this change. I think for exist-, existing homes, um, you know, we've always been very, very open. We've added porches and, and even gone above forty percent, looking at it case by case and what the change is. I, I agree with trustee Scott. I think forty, you know, forty goes to forty-five, and then, you know, the next person wants, you know, pretty soon we don't have any green space. I think thirty-five is a great benchmark, I think it's a great place to start. I, I, I can see this, I can see this.
And if we didn't have flooding issues, this wouldn't even be a, an issue to be brought up.
It wouldn't even be an issue.
Right. But our infrastructure, along with Clerton Hills and along with Hinsdale's, which we all flow into, can't handle what we've got. And we see it getting worse every year. So this is a minute way of starting something to, before we can go into some kind of a program to correct that or alleviate that by a new infrastructure, which if you look at Downers Grove, three hundred million dollars, thirty years, it's no quick fix. So, again, I, I, my intention was to make it for newer construction coming in, so they weren't building the McMansions. And the flip side of that is-
Yeah.
If we're looking at it strictly on a monetary basis, the school board ends up getting more money, the bigger the house they put in, the higher the taxes are.
Well, not only the school board, but you're talking the Park District, the library-
Right, everybody else.
Everybody benefits, and regardless whether it be District Two-O-One or the Marker or any of those districts, that all goes that way. So, and, and I guess, you know, I, I guess the way to look at it is a case of, um, I mean, we're talking two hundred and fifty dollars, and to a lot of people, two hundred and fifty dollars is a lot of money. To me, two hundred and fifty dollars is a lot of money, um, being the particular situation that I'm in right now. But then again, if we don't start someplace to try to keep some of the green space that we have in this village, when things do get better, which they will, then we're going to be faced with the same problem. We have a engineer, um, who is going to more and more extremes on how she is looking at the prince and seeing to it that water is done in a proper way. Now, if, I mean, one of the suggestions was made as far as that goes, okay, if you want to leave it at forty percent, that's fine, but then we start going to on property retention of water. Now, I don't think we want to go that far. I don't think we want to step across that boundary. Now you're talking a lot of money, if you're having to do that. Sure, there's, there's going to be people who'll be very unhappy with this particular scenario, and there's going to be people that are, are happy with it. I mean, you always have that in any given situation, no matter what you do. But we have to do something going forward to show that we are making an effort to try to control some of the problems that we have. And this information, again, I have to say, is not something that is a knee-jerk reaction by this board, it's not something that, a number that we just pulled out of a hat or whatever and threw out here and said, well, it's going to be thirty-five percent. That's not the way any of this came about. We have had residents come into us with flooding issues and water issues and sewage issues and on and on and on, and we could continue this conversation for another half hour, forty-five minutes, I'm sure. But-
Oh, no.
At this point, if you go to thirty-five percent, then you have that room between thirty-five and forty, if you so choose to allow them to increase it. I have to say it's thirty-five percent.
When have we ever dissuaded people from putting additions on their houses if they want to stay in the village?
We never have.
And the other thing is, if you're going to put a thirty or forty thousand dollar addition on your house in this economy, I don't think it's going to kill you to pay a two hundred and fifty dollar permit fee to get the variance.
And I mean, during the, during the whole, the whole variance process, part of the requests they can make at the variance is asking the board to waive that-
To waive it.
As a resident, to waive that variance request as far as a, as a fee goes, too. Which, I mean, we just showed what we have the capability of doing with one of the previous issues here on the, on the agenda tonight.
See, I liked what you said earlier, uh, trustee Fleming last week was, you know, thirty-seven percent or thirty-eight percent, and then I think, okay, do you go that route? Then you're splitting hairs.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so, so do you do the thirty-five, you go, I, I don't like the forty, and we've all been frustrated with the forty, everybody's sitting there, I think, so, you know, if we go with the thirty-five percent, and I know whatever board, we want to encourage people to build, and not build, I mean, add on, that's, we want them to stay in the community.
Well, this may also give us the opportunity, depending on the section of town they're in, if they're in a nut, non-flood zone area.
Right.
Going to the forty percent may not be a big deal, but if they're over Northeast Acres-
That's a problem.
I don't think it's going to happen.
It's a problem.
It's a big problem.
And if you realize, over in that area, a lot of the homes there have our, have tremendous amount of yards, and they're still flooding. This is not going to even begin to alleviate the problem. The problem is underground and getting it out of Westmont. This thirty-five to forty percent is not even going to begin to help the saturated grounds. It's not the ground, it's the underneath, how it gets out. So, you know, I, I don't think, I think we're doing a false hope with the people, we're doing a dis-, disservice to other people, but, um, no, I, I will not go for thirty-five.
Well, but until we can come up with the, anywhere from ten to fifteen million dollars to correct that and come up with the intergovernmental agreements with the other villages in order to track this water the way it should be, and the runoff, we have to do something to protect the residents in this village. In Northeast Acres, Oakwood is another area that's been shown there.
They've got a lot of green space.
Let me finish, Pat, let me finish now. We have talked about this issue and talked about this issue on numerous occasions. Now, in my area, on the street where I live, honestly, I don't have a water issue where I'm at, but I can guarantee you, three houses down from me, going north, those people flood every time there is a large rain. Now, that really didn't even come up as a floodplain area on the report, but I can tell you for a fact, there are streets, when we get that hundred-year rain going through here on the south end, the only way you're going to get from south to north is if you take Cass Avenue, or if you go to Fairview, or you try to cut through Downers, because every street I have seen it collects water in the low area.
Well, and I think in that, I think in trustee Fleming's scenario, if you take that one block, for example, and take five, six homes on that street-
Yep.
And build them up to forty, forty-one, forty-two percent, that is going to have an impact. Yes, underground, it, it just, I-
And how many times, how many times have we heard residents come into this board and say to us, "I didn't have a problem with this," until they built this, as trustee Scott says, this McMansion next to me?
And you may want to ask some of the people in Northeast Acres that exact question, because that's one of the biggest things that they come to talk to us about, is across the street from me, when they built the big, whether it's a two-flat or whatever it was, I didn't have any problems. After they built it, I've got problems. So where you may be right in, in the way you feel about it, the people who are living with this every day, and every time it rains, their feelings about it are totally different because they're living with this.
No, I understand, but I'm trying to say, I don't want to give them false hope.
But even if it's miniscule, even if that help is this much, it's help.
It won't even be seen. It's going to be so small, it won't even be seen.
Well, small is good, I mean, small is something.
They have, the old homes there, they have tons of acreage over there that's undeveloped.
And, and a lot of it is, is that they're sitting way back on the front, back of the lots, too.
Because that had always been a pool.
Exactly.
I don't think any of us are going to change our, change our vote at this point.
Nope.
No.
We just, we need a, we need a vote.
It's an attempt to move in the right directions. It's obviously not going to solve all the problems, but it's moving in that direction.
It's a step.
And, um-
Well, it was this, it was this way before, before the, the big housing boom came anyhow. This is no different than what this community was in for many years.
Right.
And when they started building the bigger homes, we decided, or, at the board at this time decided to raise it to forty. We're doing no different than what this community had for many, many years before this.
This community, this community has done a lot to solve a lot of flooding problems already. Where, where I live, whenever we'd have a strong rain, there'd be a stream running parallel across my parents' property, you could, you could get in a boat and sail all the way across, and it was that way all the time. Every time they got a big rain, they got three, four inches of water in their basement, and it, you know, eventually, as soon as the water, stormwater disappeared, it drained out, but that's the way it was, and they lived with it. We don't have any water over there at all. They put in a wonderful storm sewer project that cured the flooding problems in that whole area.
Didn't have anything to do with what was built on top of it, and you built all those homes around your area, and it didn't cause the flooding, did it? But you do have, we do have that one neighbor, for some unforeseen reason, he is getting water.
Right.
But it's not coming from the surface to the house, it's coming from under somewhere.
Right.
But I'm saying, you took a massive area, and we have those brand-new homes on it, and it did not cause the flooding. So, yeah, it, it'll help if we can get the underground work done, but I just, it didn't, we just don't have the problem, but it's not just that, it's that I think when they did the massive retention, and that retention has problems on Richmond, but they resolve it, I feel sorry for Clerton Hills on that end, but, um, Oak has always had that problem way down there, and no matter what they did, and there hasn't been homes built way down there for a long time.
Right.
So I, that's why I said, I think this is, this is just causing more thing, we're going to go back to what we did back, when we had it thirty-five, is people are going to come in, because most of the homes were probably built around a thirty-five, but I'm, uh, no.
I think if that's the ca-, if that's the case, I, between forty and thirty-five, I'm not in favor of the forty, that's the, I mean, thirty-five, like you said, Pat, is, is where we're at, but I'd have to go with the thirty, if, if you're given those two choices, I'm going to go with the thirty-five, and, and hope that has some benefit for the residents. And I think whatever boards in the future, if they're, they're going to evaluate this again, but, uh-
Like we're doing now.
I, I also want to make a point that, you know, this board, as we discuss this, and when we're done, I know, I'll shut up. But, but my point is, the, the planning zoning was six oh the other way, five, six, whatever, six, five oh the other way.
It was, no, I, I think they, they wanted the whole-
It was unanimous the other way.
You know, the other way. So I mean, we're ta-, I mean, I'm looking at what they said, okay, and read about and watch them, and why do they say that? So it's not just we're, we're dead set on the thirty-five percent, we, we're listening to what people have said. And they, you know, that board said, no, residents are saying, I've had residents say, yeah, you know what, I've had the flooding problem, they built a new home, you know, so I'm listening to those residents, so it's a, it's a tough call, but if it's going to stay at forty, I, it's, it's really tough.
It's just that I think people are going to, you know, the same thing when we went to get the engineering study, people thought, boom, we're going to be out there, we're going to start fixing. We can't, we got to get the money, we got to still look at other things, and, and they, it was a false hope for some of the people.